I'd like to call to order the Agenda Budget Committee Thursday, December 7th, 2017. Roll call Ms. Kathy.
Yes, sir. Mr. Andrew Ponte?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
President Guidry?
Here.
Vice Chairman Landry? Mr. Latour?
Here.
Mrs. Trimmie?
Here.
And Chairman White?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Item number three, hold a public hearing at 5:00 PM as advertised in accordance with the Local Government Budget Act to allow the public an opportunity to provide input on the proposed parish budget for fiscal year 2018 as presented to the Budget Committee on November 16th, 2017. Mr. Bean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We really don't have any other information to present. It's really simply as per state law. If there are any public comments or questions regarding the proposed budget, that would be appropriate to ask for those at this time.
We have anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? See and none? Do we need a motion on this?
I would move that we accept the budget for fiscal year 2018 as presented to this committee.
I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Ponte and a second by Mr. Latour. Will have any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Item number four, consideration on recommending approval of the parish budget for fiscal year 2018 at the police jury's regular meeting on December 21st, 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I think you actually, Francis went to that one, so I think we're good. You can go to item five.
All right, well, item five, consideration of making recommendations with reference to adopting a resolution approving a request from Water Works District Number One of Ward One for matching funds in the amount of $33,000, Ward One allocation for the water line upgrade project on Bozo Road. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Ponte and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection?
I would move to adjourn if there's no other matter.
Second.
The regular meeting for Thursday, December 7th, 2017 has now been called to order. We will have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Appshire. Would you please stand?
Please join with me in prayer. "Lord, guide our hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness, right thoughts and speech. Help us to listen before speaking. Help us to understand the opinions of others. Help us to value and appreciate those we are about to convene with. May your Spirit guide us. In your name we pray. Amen."
Amen.
Face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Madam Secretary, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Appshire?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Ponte?
Here.
Mr. Barris?
Here.
Vice President?
Here. Here.
Mr. Farnum?
Here.
Mr. Gillery?
Here.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Latour?
Here.
Ms. Mayo?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mrs. Trimmie?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
President Guidry?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Just a few housekeeping items. Does anyone that have any blue slips that would like to speak on any of the items for tonight, please fill out those blue slips that are in the rear of the room, and please bring those to the front of the room to either Ms. Kathy or Ms. Jessica, and we'll make sure and get you on the agenda for tonight. And also, for those of you that have cell phones or any type of pager, we'd ask that you would put those devices to silence so that we can conduct our meeting on tonight and get through it. We would appreciate that. And with that, we'll move on to item number four. Consideration of approving the Public Works Committee report dated November 30th, 2017. Mr. Barris?
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Works Committee report dated for the meeting November 30th, 2017. Item A presented a certificate of honorable, to the Honorable Lynn Contraire on being recipient of the Jack V. Dolan Citizen of the Year Award at the 2017 Southwest Louisiana Women's Commission Conference. Item B, Mr. Chris Sullivan was scheduled to appear before the committee but did not attend. Item C recommended approving an act of sale agreement for the Pine Meadow Subdivision Connection Project. Item D recommended approving an act of sale agreement for the Coach Williams Drive Extension Project. Item E recommended that a resolution be adopted approving an act of donation agreement for the John Stein Road and Houston River Road improvements. Item F recommended accepting Calcasieu Parish Project Number 2014-08 Nelson Road and Ham Reed Road Roundabout Project in Calcasieu Parish as substantially complete. Item G recommended accepting Calcasieu Parish Project Number 2015-05 Houston River Road Bridge Replacement Project in Calcasieu Parish as substantially complete. Item H recommended accepting Blue Woods Phase One Block One Subdivision located on Puhoe Road in Ward Eight. Item I advise that the Christmas at the Courthouse event will be held on Friday, December 8th, from 3:30 PM to 8:00 PM with the lighting ceremony to take place at 5:30 PM. That is the end of my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do we have any comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Gillery.
Item I, I just would love to see everybody out there tomorrow. This is a big thing tomorrow. On behalf of James, James started this a couple of years ago, and this is one of his sights that he wanted to see, and they're gonna have Santa Claus, Miss Claus, and coffee, I mean, hot chocolate and everything. So just want to invite everybody out there, and thanks, you staff, so much. Thank you.
Move to approve all items.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Fornham on all items. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? That motion will carry. Moving on to item number five, take appropriate actions on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane?
Mr. President, we have eight renewals and recommend that they be approved.
I have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Moving on to item number six. Consideration of approving payments of all current invoices. I have a motion by Mr. White and a second by Ms. Trimmie. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? That motion will carry. Item number seven.
Move on seven.
Consideration of approving the minutes of the regular police jury meeting of November 2nd, 2017. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Ponte and a second by Mr. Appshire. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item number eight. Consideration of approving the Agenda Committee report dated November 30th, 2017. I have a motion by Mr. Fornham and a second by Mr. Calvin. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item number nine. Consideration of approving the Budget Committee report dated December 7th, 2017. Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Committee of the Police Jury met today at 5:00 PM and had a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed parish budget for fiscal year 2018. After the hearing comments, the committee made a motion to recommend approval for the parish budget for fiscal year 2018 at the Police Jury's Regular Meeting on December 21st, 2017. The committee also recommended approval of funding requests to the Water District Number One of Ward One in the amount of $33,000 for a water line upgrade project on Bozo Road. That is the end of my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. White. We do have discussion. Mr. Landry?
Mr. White, on those funds to that Water District, was that matching funds? Are they gonna contribute as well?
Yes, sir. Sure is.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. I have a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Latour. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item number 10. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving an agreement between the police jury, the Calcasieu Parish District Attorney's Office, the Calcasieu Parish School Board, the Calcasieu Parish Sheriff's Office, and the City of Lake Charles for the implementation of the Positive Change Initiative Program. Mr. Bowlin?
Thank you, Mr. Guidry. As you know, you and myself and Mr. Gillery and Mr. Scott and Mr. Summers and Celesteen from OJDS met on this proposal two or three weeks ago. And at this time, we really feel this is a very strong proposal by Mr. DeRosier, and it will reach out to those communities who have recently seen an increase in violent juvenile crime. So I don't want to steal all of his thunder, but with that, I'll call on our district attorney, Mr. DeRosier.
DeRosier, please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Thank you. John DeRosier, 901 Lake Shore Drive, District Attorney, Calcasieu Parish, Louisiana. Ladies and gentlemen, I can't tell you how much I appreciate the cooperation of the police jury, the city, the sheriff's department, the school board, the Lake Charles Police Department, and all of the people who have gotten together to recognize the problem that we have in this community and all over this country. We have to start somewhere, and we're gonna start in Calcasieu Parish, Louisiana. We are gonna address issues with young black males being involved in violent crimes. You've seen it, you've seen the end result of it in Chicago, Detroit, Baltimore, Ferguson, Baton Rouge, New Orleans, and it's here. What we have so fortunate, we are so fortunate to be in an area that has the best economic development in this country right now. But we're not all part of that. And what we need to do is find that group. And that group that I'm talking about is middle school, 12, 13, and 14-year-olds. And we need to demonstrate to them that their lives have significant value and that they can get to that light at the end of the tunnel. And they can have good jobs and make good livings and have good families and do things other than commit crimes. In order to do that, we're gonna have to have dedicated professionals, which we already have on board, that are gonna be employed to do this, and numerous volunteers, which we already have on board, that are gonna direct this problem. We have the opportunity here to make a difference, not only in this community, but in this state and this country. And again, you have to start somewhere. It started by this body recognizing the problem along with the sheriff's department, the city, and the school board, and all of us. And I can't tell you how enthusiastic I am about this. For 12 years now, I've been district attorney, and I'm more excited about this project. We can do more good for the people of this parish and this state with this project than we've done in a lot of other things. I'm really pleased that the parish has come on board, not only to contribute a little bit of money to this, but to open up the Mark Center. And not only just open it up in terms of hours, but in terms of philosophy, about what we need to accomplish and what we need to do in these communities to do two things. One, break this cycle and change this culture. Ladies and gentlemen, with your help, we can do this. We can make something happen that has not heretofore happened in this state. We can start it right here in Calcasieu Parish, and that's what we need to do. And I appreciate your help very much.
John, we have a few jurors that have a few comments, but I just want to make a quick comment. Actually, when Mr. Bowlin actually brought this to us and kind of described to us what it was that you was doing, I can't applaud you enough for doing what you're doing, Mr. DeRosier, because the fact is that a lot of kids in this city believe that geographically where they're located at determines who they will become in the future. And that's not so. And this program that I feel is gonna make a difference in that for those little young kids, because I could have been one of those little kids. And I'm just so thankful that you looked outside the box and saw that this was something that we needed. And I can't thank our staff enough for actually bringing it to our attention. So again, Mr. DeRosier, we thank you for all that you've done. Mr. Gillery?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is gonna be a great program, because it's gonna catch them at a very young age. And if something starts going wrong, you're gonna be able to go into the house and talk to the family and give them an attorney and everything. But I definitely want to thank you, Mr. John, for everything that you are doing. And thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gillery. Mr. Scott?
You know, you've heard it said that the biggest problem offers the greatest reward. And so regardless if you want to look at it as a problem, it's something that we see as serious, and that's the youth of this community. And anything we can do, whether it's hire two or three more people to make sure the Mark Center is open, Calcasieu Parish has always led the way in many a things, but you could never go wrong in our youth. You know, that is our greatest asset outside of maybe Hal. But they are, they're by far worth every penny we could ever spend on them. And if one of them gained out of this, it was worth every penny. So thank you. I'm just glad that we're all partners in this. You don't see all of our names together like this in a lot of places for that kind of money, but it's well worth every penny. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Mr. McMillan?
I was gonna reiterate some of the things that he said. He said it very well, Dennis. Thank you for doing a good job. To have our leadership in our community step up like this, and John, you've done great things in our parish, and we really appreciate what you do as our district attorney. And I know you would much rather deal with these kids at this point than have to deal with them later in courts and trials and criminal activities. So I'm thrilled that we can do this, that we're all pulling together to do this and make a real difference in Calcasieu Parish. What I want to see is we make sure this is everlasting. It's ongoing. It's evergreen. That this program is gonna start working and keep working. So however we can support you, please come back to us and then we'll work with you in every way we can. And thank you for your leadership on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Any other jurors? Mr. DeRosier, we thank you. Any other discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item number 11, consideration of adopting an ordinance allowing the disposition of the police jury's interest in the donation of the City of Lake Charles.
Move on 11.
All items, Mr. Andrew Ponte?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me read those into the record. A, Opelousas Street. B, Evans Street. C, 1621 A Street. D, 2133 Klein Street. I had a motion by Mr. Andrew Ponte on all items and a second by Mr. Gillery. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item number 12, consideration of adopting an ordinance authorizing the purchase of property located at 4112 Tracy Circle. Sulfur, new funding received from the FEMA mitigation, FEMA Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant Program. I have a motion by Mr. Fornham and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Do we have discussion? Mr. Landry?
Oh, no. That's gonna be their Christmas present. I promise you.
Okay.
I don't know who they are, but I imagine they're pretty happy.
Merry Christmas to them then.
Get a house that doesn't flood anymore.
Yes, indeed. Any other discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Moving on to item number 13, consideration of adopting resolutions for each of the following items as requested by the Human Service Department.
Move on 13, all bullets.
Okay, let me read those into the record. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Approving the rehabilitation construction agreement between the police jury, Elizabeth Lejeune, recipient homeowner, and Kevin McDaniel contractor for the rehabilitation of the dwelling located at 526 Helen Street. B, approving a memorandum of understanding and local funding mechanism between the required one-stop operation partner relative to the operations of the Calcasieu Business and Career Solution American Job Center. C, acknowledging supplemental of a minutes of the Calcasieu Human Service Advisory Board for the meeting held on June 20th, 2017. I have a motion by Mr. Collins on all bullets and a second by Mr. White. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item number 14, take appropriate actions on the following bids and/or proposals received by the parish purchasing agent.
Move on 14, all bullets.
Second.
Okay, let me read those into the record. Mr. Andrew Ponte, thank you so much for that. A, proposal for project-based vouchers selection. The Agenda Note states that staff recommend that the proposal of LDG development be accepted. B, Jim Kent Road Bridge Replacement Project. The Agenda Note states that the parish engineering recommend that the low bid in the amount of $423,050.50 for WE McDaniel and Sun LLC be accepted. C, bids for gasoline and diesel fuel. D, proposal for automated external defibrillator equipment and services. The Agenda Note states that all proposals were non-responsive. Staff recommend permission to re-advertise. E, River Road Bridge Replacement Project. The Agenda Note states that the parish engineering recommend that the low bid in the amount of $601,857.85 from Mallet L. Gwynn Construction LLC be accepted. I had a motion by Mr. Andrew Ponte on all bullets and a second by Ms. Trimmie. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? That motion will carry. Item number 15, consideration of authorization of parish purchasing agent to advertise for bids for the 1020 Rhine Street Demolition Project.
Move on 15.
I have a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Any objection? We do have discussion. Mr. Gillery?
Is that the marking line?
What item?
15.
Mr. Gillery, that is the former district attorney's office that faces Rhine Street.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gillery. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Bryan, Vice President, you have the floor.
Brian and I have been talking about that for probably many years. What are the plans after demolition?
Really, at this point, Mr. Bryan, is to keep it as green space. I think we could probably, you know, dress it up better with a little more time, but not really to put anything there necessarily. But that's for a future decision for y'all.
Right, okay, good.
We'll work through that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Bean. Mr. Landry?
If we do build anything there, Mr. Bryan was wanting to see if we could get it closer to the road. I think it could be moved up for it about another, maybe three feet.
More space we can get there, Mr. Landry.
If we could. I think they could do it.
Mr. Scott?
I'm sure we're gonna keep it green space. It is kind of a small area, but I would hope it's gonna match some of kind of what they've already done downtown development and that. So whatever we do, we want it to kind of be part of maybe the transit center across there, something that's, you know, worth keeping as green space.
Absolutely, yes, sir. That's a great point, and we definitely want to do it. It is an entrance into downtown, and it needs to show, so, yeah.
Could you dig it deep enough to make it regional detention? Maybe four or 500 feet deep?
Put that on the list.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. I am not gonna close this item out without calling on Mr. Andrew Ponte. I know Mr. Andrew Ponte has something to say on this item.
No, I'm not.
Oh, my goodness. I could, but I'm not. Oh, okay. All right, any other discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item number 16. Consideration of adopting a resolution accepting the 14th District Courthouse Improvement Project as substantially complete. I have a motion by Ms. Trimmie. And a second by Mr. Latour. Did I miss somebody?
No, you got it.
Okay, any other discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Okay, item number 17, take appropriate actions on items of the following members of various boards and districts. A, Ms. Betty Cooper Brown, Calcasieu Parish Planning and Zoning Board.
Move to appoint Janelle Hyatt.
Second.
Ms. Sandy moves to appoint Ms. Janelle Hyatt, and I have a second by Mr. Landry. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That item will carry. Item B, Mr. Paul Hutchinson.
Move to appoint Jerry Dell Pret.
Southwest Louisiana Convention and Visiting Bureau. Mr. McMillan moves to appoint Mr. Jerry Dell Pret, and I have a second by?
Ms. Trimmie.
Ms. Trimmie? Is there any discussion? Any objection? That item will carry. Item C, Mr. Michael D. Southwest Louisiana Convention and Visiting Bureau. Mr. McMillan wants to move for deferral for 30 days, and I have a second by Ms. Trimmie. Any other discussion? Any objection? That item will carry. Item D, Mr. Mark LeBlanc.
Move for 30 days.
Bird Coliseum Advisory Board. I have a motion by Mr. White.
I think we're ready to present a name on that.
We are.
We'd like to present the name of Scott Bowers for that appointment.
Mr. Fornham made a motion that he would like to appoint Mr. Scott Bauer. And I have a second by Mr. Latour. Is there any other discussion?
I don't know.
Ms. Trimmie, do you have any discussion?
She don't know.
I'd like to ask a question.
Okay, with that being said, Mr. Scott Bauer will be the guy.
Wait a minute, I'm asking a question.
Okay, I didn't.
Now she knows.
No, I'm trying to figure it out.
You got the floor, Ms. Trimmie.
So Ward Four, Ward Five, Ward Six, or Ward Seven? So I represent Ward Four, all of Ward Five, almost all of Ward Six, and Ward Seven. So where does this person live?
Carlos.
10-4. That's what I needed to know.
We're not gonna move until you're happy, Ms. Trimmie.
Well, it's not my area, but I love the people.
They love you too, Ms. Trimmie.
I move with them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fornham. We appreciate you.
I didn't open the BHU yet.
Any objection? That item will carry. 18 is advised items for 18. We'll move on to item number 19, consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Nathaniel Curtis? Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure many of y'all know Mr. Curtis.
Yes.
He's been in radio for years and years here, a very, very intelligent man, also a very religious man. And I'm sure, I know, Mr. Bean, you've been on his show a number of times, and he had invited me to go. I've been on a few times. I think, Mr. McMillan, I know y'all had visited. But just a great person, and, you know, he's gonna be really sorely missed. He really did a special thing, and I don't know if any of the rest of y'all were ever able to go on his show, but really, really interesting. I can tell you, he's one of a kind, without a doubt. I know Mr. Bean always said he enjoyed going.
Oh, it was a pleasure.
He would pick your brain, now. I'll tell you what, he really would.
You had to be ready.
You absolutely did, and there was no script. You didn't know what he was gonna ask you, but it was always enjoyable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry, for those kind words. Mr. Scott?
Yeah, when I was deciding to run for police jury back in 2008, I had a friend of mine take me to Mr. Curtis's, and we got to sit for an hour or two and just talk. And so it was really special just hearing somebody that, you know, I considered him the David Barton of Calcasieu Parish in this area. And if you don't know who David Barton is, he keeps history and God on the national level like front and center. And Mr. Curtis was just that awesome of a guy. He knew a little bit of everything and just enough to make you feel at home in his house. And so I just really think he's a great guy, and I know he'll be missed, but he left his mark for sure. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for those words, Mr. Scott. Mr. Latour?
Yeah, I'd like to second everybody was saying. He really was a great guy. He was really involved in the Republican Party. I was able to attend his show about a year or so ago, and I actually brought him home about a month ago. I was supposed to attend his show, and so I'm very sorry to hear this, consulting for his family. He was a really good guy. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Latour. Anyone else? All right. Any discussion, any objection? Moving on to item number 20.
Yeah, Mr. President.
I'm sorry.
We need just further formally, we need a motion on that item for the condolences from somebody.
Mr. Landry made a motion, and Mr. Bryan seconded it. Thank you, Mr. Bean. Moving on to item number 20, consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Victor Mansour Jr. We have a few jurors that want to speak. I'll go first. I can't say enough about Victor. I mean, I worked with his daughter, Megan, and he was the guy that actually took my wife and I wedding pictures, and it just goes so far back. When we look at our house, the pictures that we have in our home, all of them's got his name at the bottom of it. And he was just such a great guy. He was the guy that called me one day. This is a true story. He called me from LSU when my senior year. He said, "Kevin, I want to do something nobody's probably ever done." He said, "I know you get pictures taken of you all the time on the field, action shots and all that stuff." He said, "How about coming to the studio with your full uniform, and I want to take a picture of you, just show you as the person you are?" But that picture is in my game room, because when I look at that, he showed me who I really was as a person by looking at that picture. And sometimes people take pictures of you all the time, but sometimes pictures mean more by the way that they're taken. And that's what I think Victor did to so many photos that he captured. It's lasting memories. And I just hate, I hate it when I heard it, but he's just a guy that I know we all love and just definitely gonna miss. Because I know he's played a big part of my life and my family. I mean, he took our family photo. It's just, when you look in the Guidry house, he's everywhere. I just want to say that I'm truly gonna miss him for all the things that he left as a human being for us. And with that, I'll stop and go to Mr. Gillery.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say Victor was such a great guy. We did lots of weddings and bachelorette parties and everything together. And Victor would love riding in the back of the limo when we did, when we had those parties, and he was such a great guy. He always had a smile on his face, and he's gonna be missed through that fabulous eye he had. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gillery. Mr. Barris?
Thank you, Mr. President. In the television business, I had many, many instances where Victor and I would be at a wedding or some sort of function, and, you know, he would forget an extension cord, and I'd, you know, let him borrow one, or vice versa. I mean, just always a positive guy. I can remember us talking shop a bunch about, he was a gearhead. He loved photography. And I knew enough about it to be dangerous. And, you know, and we would commiserate, you know, when the whole age of digital came in. I think he was one of the last holdouts.
of the last holdouts to, you know, to go to digital, but he was a true photographer and an artist of photography. A lot of people buy a camera, and they're a photographer. He was one of the last of the Mohicans. Great guy. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, we've been blessed in southwest Louisiana to have some really great artists. I mean, you take Candace Alexander, Elton Luvier. You rank right up there with Victor Mansour. He had a gift. God gave him a gift, and he could see things that the average guy couldn't see, and he could see it through a camera lens, and then we could all see it like he saw it. And that was a tremendous gift, and he really used that gift in a good way to capture so many things, from family weddings to the outdoors, wildlife, and having a chance to be his friend and call him a friend is a great privilege to us, and he'll be sorely missed. And his family's a great family. Megan is a very good friend of ours and very proud of her dad. And I just want to say thank you to KPLC and what they did on their documentary they did on Victor. Tremendous. One of the icons of southwest Louisiana, and going way too soon, sixty-two years old. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Any other jurors? We had a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Gilery. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item number twenty-one, consideration of going to discuss lawsuit number twenty fifteen dash thirty-six oh two. We'll now move into executive session. Mr. Andrew Pont?
Mr. Save Council.
I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. This time I'd ask for motion to adjourn.
Come on in.
I have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Latour. We're now adjourned.